Yeah, that was nice. There's always so much on the east side. And y'all like. I know.
Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting of the Wayne County Commission to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Call. You have a quorum present.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America.
Everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Invocation.
Today, the invocation will be introduced and given by Commissioner Alona Varga.
Good morning, everyone. Shall we bow our heads? Dear God, thank you for waking up, waking us up this morning to this beautiful day. We thank you for all your blessings and pray for miracles for those who are ailing, dear God. Give us the will always to do the work that will be pleasing in your eyes. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item, please.
Reading, correcting, and approval of the Journal.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Ware.
Move approval.
It's been moved and supported to approve the Journal. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Report from the Chair.
Thank you. Just would like to take this opportunity to introduce my summer intern again this summer, Mr. Kenier McAdoo. Kenier. He's a rising sophomore at Tennessee State University's majoring in Computer Engineering. He plays the trombone in the Tennessee State Marching Band. So happy to have him with us this summer. Thank you, Kenier. Next item, please.
Unfinished business. There is none listed. Offering of all petitions, ordinances, resolutions, and presentations. There are none listed. We are moving to page two of the agenda. Reports from committees. Report A is from the Committee on Public Services. There are nine items listed on pages two and three of the agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Morecki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move approval for items one through nine.
One through nine has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on any of those items, Commissioner Webb and Commissioner Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have three location questions, just because I don't know where these amenities are in our park system that are being referenced in the Wayne County Parks Millage Capital Plan. Is there somebody here from the parks that can answer questions?
Which item is that?
It's on the receiving file, the last item. It's a receiving file from the Park Millage. Money is...
Number nine?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I just, I'm not familiar with, and it sounds pretty cool, but I don't know where the music park playscape is. Does anybody know where the music park playscape is?
Is there anyone here from the administration, from Parks and Rec? Or Roads?
There is a comfort station and picnic pavilion improvements in progress, but it doesn't say what locations. And a bike park. I know there's bike paths throughout the park, but I don't know where the bike parks are.
That is not in my district. Does anyone knows whose district those items are in? I would think that the Commissioner, whose district that may, it would know. I think the Parks people are in...
Very last page of the packet.
The Parks Department are preparing for their mud day today, so that's why they're probably not here. But Commissioner, we can get that for you at the end of the meeting.
Okay, I would appreciate it. It's about $600,000 worth of expenditures. And, you know, I don't have any problem with them. I just didn't know where they were at.
The locations.
Found, yeah. Okay, thank you.
We'll make sure that we reach out and get an answer for the locations for you.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Commissioner Colleen.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sitting on public services this term, but I, items two through six, I'd like to ask Commissioner Morecki, I haven't seen this terminology before, approval of a grant application. You know, when we have road projects and stuff, we approve the project, but what's the grant application? Why are we approving that?
Commissioner Morecki.
Commissioner Colleen, actually, that, that has been in progress, and I know the DPS would like to eliminate the grant application approvals so that these can move forward. But since I've been the Chair, they've had these, and I'm assuming that's always been the case, that the Commission actually approves the application to go forward, but it does hold it up for them to move forward with some of these. So I know there's been talk on possibly eliminating this step and then coming to the Commission when we get the grant approval.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Does that mean, then, there's going to be a second approval once the grant is here? And then we have to actually approve the project after that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Webb.
Let's clear that up, thank you.
I'm sorry, were you, Commissioner Webb, did you add to that point?
Yeah, thank, thank you. Well, yeah, as a former Chair, what they, and I called about them too, so I had the same question as Commissioner Colleen, because historically, I, I remember them in the recent, to some degree, but there's five of them. And they put them, they have to get our approval to, to, to...
Apply for them.
Yeah, just to apply. And they're only expecting to get about 50% of the ones they apply for this year. And what they can't get, because they have to apply for this grant from MDOT. And what they don't get this year, if it's like an urgent situation, they'll use our own Public Act 51 monies. But if not, then their projects that end up being applied for next year. Again, because they're eligible for these specific dollars from MDOT. But I don't know, though, that I would like to see the process go away because I would like to, I would like this Commission to know what the projects are that they're looking to do, unless they submit those to us in some other way. I think that's one of the problems we see in many areas. The administration goes all the way down a road with something, and then, then once they've got all, everybody on board to buy something or sell something or whatever, then they come to us and ask us for approval. But what if we don't agree with you doing that to begin with, then all those resources are wasted. In some cases, allocations for brokers or, or whatever, different things, advertising, marketing, resources, county taxpayers' dollars are being paid toward that end, which may not even be something that this body supports to begin with. So I wouldn't want to see this go in that direction as well, so I am glad that they are here. Unless they can come up with another way to inform us about that, maybe we should sit down and have that dialogue with them. But, and here are the reasons as to why they don't want the approval process to come through us. But these all look like very good projects, and I hope they're successful achieving the grants. Thank you.
Commissioner Morecki.
Thank you. And you know what? I don't, I don't want to speak for the department because it may be certain grant applications that they don't, that they would like to eliminate, so I don't want to speak for them. I know with this, there's five applications. We're expecting three, that we'll get three of them. They kind of prioritize the three they think we're going to get. But I don't want to speak to them as far as what they want to eliminate as far as our role in grant applications. So I'm just telling you the conversations that would have been said in the past.
Very good. Felicia, is there any legal reference to why the applications, is this per the procurement ordinance?
In most instances, the grantor, so in this case, the state requires a commission resolution. And that's typically the reason why you get the applications, is because there's some requirement to have the legislative body's approval to make sure that there's buy-in before they can actually apply for the funding. I assume that's the case here, but I believe Ron will clarify.
Ron.
Ron Agosinski, Planning Engineer for Engineering Division. These are grant applications, and the grant application process requires us to have a commission resolution because there is match money. If, if we get funded for these projects, there is match money that's required for, for these projects there. And therefore, the state wants to know that the, that the legislative body is on board with the match money when, if it becomes approved as a project. So that's the reason for coming here.
Well, that's a great clarification. So that's to answer your, back to, because of Mr. Colleen, that's the answer to your question, because the state wants buy-in from the legislative body to make sure that we're okay with those applications. All right? Commissioner Webb.
Thank you. Ron, why we have you, though. I know that there are instances where there's timeline issues with, with MDOT. And we end up with, like, retroactive stuff, or because you can't help it, or exigent approvals because there is a limited timeline when working with the state. And, and I know we were trying to, to get by some of the approvals in the process, that we're delaying it internally before I get to the Commission for support, and then you are having to come and ask for exigent approval because we needed whatever, 15 signatures on certain, on certain projects. Can you expound upon that for me?
Well, the department has been working with Aaron Wagner on our TCM process to reduce the amount of time it requires from the time I get the contract in my office here to get to the commission process here. So we're trying to reduce the amount of time, and a procurement director has been heavily involved with that process.
Excellent. Okay, because I, I knew there was some talk about that, and I didn't know if that was what was maybe being confused about how we approve things around here, but that is an excellent thing to do.
But that is correct. Once I get a contract, I have 35 days to get a return back to the state of Michigan in order to get the project moving along.
Yeah, and we don't want to lose their matching funds, and, and so if we can expedite that, I think it's wonderful that procurement's working with you to do that. So that's, that's a good thing. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the Public Services Report? Commissioner Basham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a point of privilege, I'd like to introduce a couple of special guests I have with me today watching the Commission at work. Councilwoman Caroline Patz and her husband Bill from the Taylor City Council is joining us today.
Are they, if you could stand, please. Thank you so much for joining us. Welcome. And at this time, if you could please vote on the Public Services Report.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We are on Report B from the Committee on Economic Development. There are five items listed on pages four and five of the agenda.
Commissioner Haters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move item one, two, and three for receiving file, four and five for approval.
There's support?
Support.
Has been moved and supported in discussion on the Committee on Economic Development. Receiving file one, two, and three, and approval of four and five. Commissioner Webb.
Thank you. I just have a question regarding item number one. And again, it's just a location question. Is there anybody here from the administration that can speak to this? So can we ask that the administration, please, have people from the different departments here to answer Commissioner questions when they're asking us to approve things? I, I, I'm guessing this is on Schoolcraft in, in Livonia. I don't sit on this committee, and the majority of the commissioners don't. So I was just curious as to what currently exists. It just gives you an address, 31501 Schoolcraft. That's near Merriman, I know that, but I don't know, I mean, it's always great when they're rehabilitating properties. It would just be good to know what it is.
Number one, she stuck.
Number one. Does the Chair know? Do you know what is there now? I don't expect you to, but...
The amount?
No, no. What is there? It's, they're, they're doing a rehabilitation of a development at 31501 Schoolcraft Road in Livonia.
Joe, our legislative just said it's west of Levan?
It's, it's...
East of Levan.
East of Levan.
Oh, yeah, it's well east of Levan, yeah. It's between Merriman and Levan, but it doesn't state what is there. I just was wondering if there's an old, you know, decrepit building there. They were rehabilitating. It would be nice for Commissioner Morecki, and I don't know what that is. Okay.
Is there anyone here from the Roads Department who could possibly speak to the location of this? Okay, thank you. As a receiving file, they come from the townships, so the departments wouldn't have anything to do with it. They come directly to us to receive and file what the municipality is doing, so...
But I would think they would know.
Yeah, I think it comes straight to us, the Commission, for just a receiving file as an item, as opposed to going through the department.
So you don't think Economic Development knows what, what that plan is? Our, our Department of Economic Development doesn't know what that is?
Felicia.
Through, through the Chair, state law requires that certain notices such as this be submitted to the legislative body. It's not uncommon for us to get these. Generally, the department has nothing to do with them. I can't speak specifically for this one, but generally speaking, they have nothing to do with it. They don't have any information. It's just something that's a technical requirement that the locals do in order to comply with the statute.
Well, I, I still think it would be good for us to know. Just, I mean, it's a receiving file. It's just a piece of information, but it doesn't tell us anything. Unless we know what it is. But, okay, we'll receive and file it, I guess.
Commissioner Morecki and Commissioner Haters.
And actually, the, the document that came from the clerk in Livonia doesn't even identify what it is, the one we have in our packet, so I don't think it... They may not even know.
Commissioner Haters.
Yeah, I think it's the local community restriction to have, because it have some rezoning issue because you create a district for whatever the use is. That is the local municipality issue. Sometimes, local municipality do not send the county detail of the plan unless it's requested. So it's to request that from the city of Livonia, that it's...
Oh, okay.
One more. It's the old beauty school that just closed down.
Oh, good to know, good to know.
Old beauty school, okay.
Well, can I just make one last comment? It would just be nice for us to know. I, I, you know, maybe that's a request that we make generally to the communities that we work with in Economic Development, that just as Commissioners that represent an individual district, not that, I don't have any issue with them ever. They're always good things. If they're rehabilitating old buildings, that's a wonderful thing. But just as Commissioners, it would be nice for us to know what it is they're rehabilitating. Because when you go to a community event and somebody will say, hey, what are they doing over there? You know, it'd be good to know the answer to that. So anyways, just, just, just putting it out there as a request for people to think about. It would be good for us to know that, ask the locals to provide us with that. But thank you, Commissioner Morecki and Grace, for, for looking into that.
Commissioner Varga.
Two words, Google search. Thank you.
No, we already tried that. We couldn't get a signal.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We are on Report C from the Committee on Ways and Means. There are eight items listed on pages five and six of the agenda.
Commissioner Varga.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval of the entire agenda, or entire report.
Been moved and supported. Any questions, discussion on the Committee on Ways and Means? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We remain on page six of the agenda. We are on Report D from the Committee on Health and Human Services. There are two items listed.
Commissioner Colleen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the Committee is recommending both items for approval.
Moved and supported. Commissioner Colleen.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And item number one, this, this proposed appointment completes the, the appointments to the Mental Health Board for this year, and we do now have a, a complete board. Of course, our staff looked at the, the Mental Health Code, and the appointment conforms in all way with the Mental Health Code. Ms. Ruth was unable, was a little bit of a short notice, to get to Health and Human Services Committee. She is with us today, and with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like her to introduce herself. Well, she's right there. And tell us, discuss a little bit.
Ms. Ruth?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kenya Ruth. I'm from Detroit. I was born and raised here. I am a big advocate of mental health. I attended Cass Tech High School. We'll stay there for a moment.
I know. Let's, yes.
Primarily to me being self-employed. I used to work for Daimler Chrysler, and my last assignment with them is that I was a part of the NASCAR diversity team for roughly two and a half years, and then I became a full-time mom, where I did a lot of volunteering community services.
Okay, welcome. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Look forward to your involvement on that board.
It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Monique Baker McCormick?
Welcome.
Thank you.
What side of town do you live on?
I'm east side. I live in Cornerstone.
Okay. Just wanted to know if you were in the best district.
East side.
Even District One.
Excuse me, the best side, east side. Well, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming out today. We appreciate you. You all set, Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the Committee on Health and Human Services? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Next item, please.
We are on page seven of the agenda. Report E from the Committee on Audit. There are four items listed.
Commissioner Basham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have four items I need to support for receiving file.
There's support?
Support.
Moved and supported, the four items on the Committee of Audit. Any discussion on these items? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
We are on Report F from the Committee on Government Operations. There are five items listed on pages seven and eight of the agenda.
Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move items one through four for approval. And then item five, do you want to do it separate? It has to be moved...
Let's do it separate, if we could, please.
Do you want to do it separate?
Please.
Okay. One through four for approval.
There's support? Okay, any questions on items one, two, three, and four on Government Operations? Commissioner Basham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be, because they're comparable source on two and three, I'll be, no vote.
On two and three?
Yes.
Okay, so noted.
Do note it.
Any other discussion on one, two, three, or four? Hearing none, let's vote on those four first.
Motion carries.
Okay, Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And then item number five, it has to be passed for the day to allow for a public hearing and a second reading at the next full board meeting. So I need a motion to pass for the day, or I can move to pass for the day. I need a support.
It's been moved and supported to pass this for the day. This is an ordinance. I suggest everyone to read it for preparation for the next full board meeting. Just a couple of tweaks to the procurement ordinance, and we'll have a public hearing and our second reading at the next full board meeting. Commissioner Basham?
Yes, I'd like to sort of publicly thank Cheryl Jordan for work with the Commission Council on this and trying to, you know, clean up the procurement ordinance and make it a little more palatable for everybody and, and put a little more sunshine on the process, and thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on pass for the day? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Upcoming committee and task force meetings are listed on pages eight and nine of the agenda.
Commissioner Morecki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd, I'd like to announce for the Commissioners who are on the Public Service Committee that we're going to change the time permanently to 11 o'clock AM instead of 9:30.
Okay, and then Commissioner Haters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to announce that permanently, we move the Economic Development to 10 AM.
So Public Services will be moved to 11 AM, and Economic Development will be moved to 10 AM, and we will put something in writing so that you will have it for your records. Then please note the other meetings scheduled for next week. Commissioner Varga.
Thank you. In a short time, you will be receiving from Ways and Means our meeting dates for the upcoming budget. So please take note, and hopefully, most of you will be able to attend some of those, and we are taking many of them on the road. So please take note. Thank you.
And I will give everyone a heads up that we will have a Committee of the Whole tentatively for August 6th. You just put that tentatively on your schedule. The formal notice will come out in the next couple of days. August 6th is a Tuesday for a Committee of the Whole at 10 AM. And again, a notice will come out, but if you want to write that down in your schedule, tentatively, August 6th, Committee of the Whole at 10 AM. Commissioner Webb.
Thank you. I just learned that the Ways and Means Committee has been in receipt of the proposed budget. Okay, is there a way that the rest of the Commission can receive the proposed budget prior to the Cow meeting?
Pardon?
The Ways and Means Committee received the budget, but the rest of the Commission didn't. So is there a way that the rest of the Commission can get a copy of the budget?
If anyone would like a copy of the budget, Mark, you can see Mark Abell, he can give that to you. If anyone wants the full copy of the budget.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
The Committee of the Whole is not in relation to the budget, though, just FYI.
Oh, good, thanks. Thank you.
Any other discussion on those items? Okay, next item, please.
We are on page nine of the agenda, Public Comments.
Public Comments. Anyone from the public like to address the Commission? Anyone from the public like to address the Wayne County Commission? One more time. Anyone from the public like to address the Wayne County Commission? Okay, hearing none. Next item, please.
New business. There is none listed. We are on testimonial resolutions and certificates of appreciation. There are four items listed on pages nine and 10 of the agenda.
Move approval? There's support. Moved and supported to approve the testimony resolution and certificates of appreciation. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Next item.
Memoriums. There are none listed.
Anyone wishing to add any names under memoriums? Next item.
Reconsiderations.
Reconsiderations. Any reconsiderations? Next item.
Remarks by members.
Remarks by members. Oh, Commissioner Haters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think it's a reminder I observed today is the administration not well represented to answer some of the question. I would like to bring to their attention, anytime we have important thing on our agenda or not, somebody should be here to be able to answer some of the question put by Commissioner or the public. Just reminder. Thank you.
Thank you. You're absolutely correct. We're looking at that table over there, and it's kind of empty. We shouldn't have to call them. They should come. Commissioner Basham?
It seems like it's pretty dusty. Never mind.
Mud day. I'll make one. Go ahead, Commissioner Webb. Did you have a comment?
I just, I just wanted to make one point of clarification that I verified. I'm getting a lot of letters as it relates to the park proposal in Plymouth. And on there, there's a lot of people that are stating that Wayne County has a $3 billion road problem and bridge problem, and that's why we can't afford to, to renovate our park assets or rehabilitate our parks' assets. So I don't know where they got that information from, but we don't spend Park Millage dollars on roads projects. And so that's, that's just a little confusing. I just wanted to raise people's awareness that that's the way the public's being educated, is that... is that, that, that we have a roads problem, which everybody has, you know, everybody is familiar with that, everybody's frustrated with that, local government's frustrated with that, the state needs to fund it, she's trying, but it's, it's irrelevant to the Park Village funding, so just, just want to put out there, I'm seeing it repeatedly in, in these letters that I'm getting, thank you.
Thank you, and I guess my response to that, although you did not ask for a response, is that if we do get, if people send us erroneous information, we should correct them so that they know, because sometimes people don't know there are different pots of money that are designated, like, roads' money is designated for roads, same for parks, and other items, so what does, do our due diligence to make sure that we educate those persons who send us that information.
Thank you.
Mark, you had your hand up?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could clarify the point of the, of the budget and the discussion about us in receipt of the budget, and I misunderstood the question by Commissioner Webb, our clerk formally received the budget from the administration last week, we are in the process of dissecting it and getting answers from the departments and, and business units and elected officials about their aspect of the budget, we're in the process of scheduling all of the budget hearings, the first real formal layout of the budget will be July 30th, and that's on our calendar, where we will have the report from our auditor general on budget-sensitive issues, and the administration will formally be presenting us with kind of a layout of the budget, and that'll be in anticipation of what's to follow, which is the formal budget hearings, which will probably be starting in early August, but the first real layout and discussion about the budget will be, Terrence, correct me if I'm wrong, July 30th?
Correct.
July 30th, so I just wanted to make that point, it has not gone to, to Ways and Means, but it has been receded by the commission formally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, if anyone has any information budget-related, or lacking information, please see Commissioner Varga or Mark Abell. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to mention something that, so commissioners are aware of it, especially those that have rural areas of Wayne County, but I was notified by a constituent that had seen it, that EPA is, once again, which should be named under, currently, I think we need, it needs to be changed to the EDA, Environmental Destruction Administration, they are, have approved a deep well, deep injection well project in rural Wayne County, apparently, and I'm trying to, we're trying to get some information on it, see where that's at, and I know Commissioner Haters has always been out there, front, forefront, on, as well as Commissioner Basham, on some of the things that affected their communities, and it actually affects all of us, because when you get those deep injection wells, they can destroy water sources for a lot of communities, but anyway, I haven't received the information, but just to let everybody know that EPA will be getting it, and of course, all we have is a notification, and that's, I think there's something wrong with that process.
Keep us abreast as you hear more information on that, thank you. Vice Chair Pro Tim Ware?
So, Madam Chair, I want to go back to the budget, we have received the budget, our division, Mark and-
Commissioner, we, we haven't actually received the blue book from the administration, we've just received an electronic version of the budget.
Because in the past, when the virgin, the version come out, whether it's the blue book or electronic, each commissioner received a budget, at least dating back to 1995.
We will make sure that that happens, Commissioner.
So, when the first budget come out, all the commissioners received a budget, so I know that we have a lot of new staff and new commissioners, but I can't remember always getting the book, unless the county executive is trying to save money.
We, we haven't received the book, but we will make sure that the electronic version gets out to all commissioners.
Thank you. Any other remarks by members? Remarks by members, I'll just make one remark that's nothing to do with Wayne County, but I just thought it interesting, the soccer, the women's soccer team won the World Cup for the fourth time in a row, which I think is remarkable, and you know, they also have a lawsuit out against their pay, which is substantially less than men's, I did not know how substantially less than men's it is, they get paid 90,000 per person when they win, the men get paid 500,000 when they win, I heard that this morning, and I could not believe that, so as we just celebrated women's suffrage last month, and we talk about equal rights for women, obviously, there are still some issues, especially when it comes to pay equity across many industries that are not where it should be, so I understand their fight for equality, and I hope that we're supportive, not only for them and their, and their profession, but all professions, that women should be paid equal to men, to the work that they provide to our great country, so I just wanted to make note of that, because I found it extremely shocking when I heard that this morning. All right, with that, hearing no other comments or remarks by members, there must adjourn.
So moved.
All right, thank you, adjourn, thank you.